Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Role.
Graham Cassoon.
Here.
Tobin.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
John Francois.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Approval of minutes.
Tonight we have the minutes from the common council meeting of August 20th, 2019.
Motion by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alman Burr. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Correspondents?
Nothing this evening.
For the good of the city, anyone who would like to address the council, please step forward. You have four minutes. Okay. Reports of department heads. Economic Development.
Good evening, everyone. This evening on the agenda is a resolution to authorize my department to be lead agency for the preparation of the 2020-2024 consolidated plan and to authorize the mayor to sign all the certifications. So, we are beginning our five-year HUD plan for the office and I look forward to your support towards that. That's all I have.
Any question for Maria?
Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Old DPW Commissioner. Old Treasurer. Police Chief.
Good evening. I have nothing this evening unless you have anything for me.
Any question for the Police Chief?
People are waiting, chiefs.
John?
Just a reminder about early voting. That starts Saturday, October 26th, and it'll be at the Senior Center. It's going to be from 10:26 all the way to November 3rd, and there are different times and they're all on our website. So, if anybody has any questions, they could also call our office at 346-4166. That's all I have this evening.
Question for John? Thank you, John. Okay. Remarks to the Mayor.
Good evening. First, I'd like to congratulate Chief Huachu in the Middletown Police Department on the article recently in the Times' whole record. As you know, we... The Chief has implemented many positive programs within the PD and I think his remarks were appropriate in the paper and very positive. It's something we continue to monitor. But, you know, we always look at crime over a period of time, not a short period of time, but over a trending over years, and the trend is very good and very positive. And we're happy that the police patrols in the neighborhoods have received very positive feedback from our residents and it appears to be working as the Chief said it would. So, I wanted to thank the Chief and the men and women of the Middletown Police Department for a job well done. The... This morning at the Paramount Theater, the city hosted the White Kane event. And basically, it is October 15th is a day to... A day of awareness for visually impaired and blind folk. The... There are many state agencies, local agencies, and people who use the services that are offered by all these agencies. It was a pretty interesting program. Senators Skufus and Metzger were both there. We... I spoke myself. There were demonstrations that were done for people blindfolding them or closing their eyes to show how difficult it is to navigate. And... Excuse me. One of the reasons why Middletown was chosen, this was arranged through the Center for Independent Living, Doug Hovey, who was in a wheelchair himself for many years, I believe, and was the focus on what we're doing here citywide, not only downtown. But, you all are aware of the project that we have going on with sidewalks. And not only sidewalks, but intersections specifically, that almost every traffic light within the city, those intersections will now become ADA compliant. Sidewalks will be replaced about 2 to 250 feet from each intersection. They will be ramped. There will be pedestrian crossings, I think, at most of them, if not all of them. And the new sidewalks will be put in down Dulson Avenue. Throughout the downtown, there will be all-new sidewalks, high pedestrian areas will be getting new sidewalks, and there'll be some reconfiguration. So, today is an annual event, October 15th, which happens to be my mother's 90th birthday, so happy birthday, Mom, if you're watching. And the idea behind it is to raise this awareness. And I think my message when I spoke was about, within that room, they're basically speaking to the choir. They're speaking to people who are either providers of service or advocates for those services and... But to... When they speak to people like me and I speak to you and tell you about it and bring that awareness, that's really where it hits home because this is not a one-level of government answer. It's multi-levels. We on a local level. We need funding from state and federal agencies, which we're doing. And then there's an economic side of it also, that businesses, that making your high pedestrian areas business-friendly for people with disabilities, not just those who are visually impaired, but all types of disabilities. We talked about the... Some of the mistakes that were made in the past in Middletown. For example, when you come out of the Paramount Theater, you go in, it's handicap accessible, it's street level. You cross the South Street and you run into a six-inch curb. And you have to roll up the... If you're in a wheelchair, you have to use your wheelchair to go up to the driveway opening in order to get into the parking lot. We had the same situation on South Street, I mean, on North Street, over by Something Sweet. When you came across King Street, you went into a curb. So, we ended up doing that on a temporary basis. We replaced and made a handicap accessible crossing just a little bit ways up the street. So, these are investments that we're making in our community. We have... We've done so in our pools. Ray Lynn is the person who coordinates with our recreation programs. Our Davage Park Pool is ADA compliant, has a lift. Our lifeguards are trained how to use it. We do a disability swim once a week. We have programs that are geared towards folks both with cognitive and physical disabilities. And so, we're looking to do more in those areas. So, today was very... It was an educational opportunity for all of us that did attend and hopefully, the Center for Independent Living will put it up on video so that you'll have an opportunity to watch some of the speakers from both the state of New York and local agencies as they address the issue. One interesting speaker was, I don't remember her name, but she is purchasing a home on 12 Ridge Street, or is it 14? What is it, Maria? What number? 14? 13 Ridge Street, which, as you know, is part of our CDA program. So, it's the... It's a very excellent group of people to listen to. And they had some people who... A young lady who was attending college talking about the difficulties of maneuvering through a community, how to react to a person with a disability, you know, or someone with a guide dog. Please don't pet the dog. Don't ask the pet the dog. Don't ask them for help. Do you need help? Because it wears their train of thought and their psych sensors, I think, in the cane. So, it's a good... It'll be a good read, or not a good read, a good watch for you, to hear her perspective and the perspective of the other people. So, if we're able to get it, we'll put it on Channel 20 and I think people should take a, you know, a few minutes to watch certain parts of it. The Heritage Trail. We had a press conference, as you know, with the county. The record didn't give us much coverage, so we're very disappointed, Rachel. And... But we did get some coverage on Mid-Hudson News. But probably the most talked-about thing around the city is the Heritage Trail and what's the status of it. We did have the ribbon cutting. The culvert has been signed. The bid's been awarded. Construction is at the site, so... Equipment is at the site, I mean. So, we're anticipating that trail should be, hopefully, done sometime in mid-2020. We do have a meeting coming up, I think in the next week or two, with the county to start the final planning for Phase Three, the East Main through West Main out to Ingrassia Road section of the trail. And we're going to be meeting with Mr. Brooks and his staff to complete that final design. Let me see. What else do I have? Oh. In regards to the reservoir trails, we're hoping to have them open sometime late October, early November. Mr. Bianchi from the Parks Department has been working with some volunteer groups to get the trail signage up, the color-coded signage that is necessary to open Phase One. And we hope to have people out there, as I said, late this month or early November. One thing that I'm asking the council to do, and I will be... It will be done at the next Board of Estimate meeting and hopefully be forwarded to the council, is as you know, most of our reservoir system is in the Howells Fire District, so they will be the responding emergency services agency. I met with Howells about a month or two ago, and they're purchasing a new piece of equipment for $43,000. And it's a utility terrain vehicle for emergency response. It's something we will need out there. Of course, they're not saying that we have to give them money in order to... For them to buy it, but they've requested that the city make a contribution to the Howells Fire District so that they can more than adequately cover the area. So, their ask is $10,000. I've reviewed it with the council president, who actually has some fire service background, and he was in agreement with it. Mr. Massey also at the Board of Estimate, and so we'll be forwarding it to you in a formal way after the next Board of Estimate meeting and requesting a $10,000 transfer to be forwarded to the Howells Fire District. And the last thing I have... Oh, no, not last, next to the last. Don Paris. Did Don come back? Yeah. Don Moody's has really given us some more positive comments on our fiscal status. And I'll just read you the one line, if I can find it. "Trends for the city have been positive with increasing fund balances due to proactive management and conservative budgeting." So, as you know, we're going through the budget process now. I don't know how conservative we're going to be this year, but I think we're going to be on target to be under the tax cap again, or at or under the tax cap. So, that'll be another positive. We're hoping for an upgrade next year for Moody's, and this is a positive trend towards that upgrade. And last but not least is firehouse security. As you know, we did an RFP. We had one... We had several inquiries. I think four... Three or four people did tour the facilities, and we did have one response to the RFP. Board of Estimate did meet last week, and we decided to award the contract to New York Security, which is a local company, been a business for an awful long time in the Middletown area. They do a lot of big business, a lot of hotels, a lot of government work. They do some of the county work and communities like the town of Montgomery. All three firehouses will have the cameras installed. It's a total of about 39 or 40 cameras. We decided to go with the three-year lease with a three-year option to extend, and the reason behind that, it will be all-inclusive. So, there'll be no maintenance, no equipment replacement. Whatever happens is on the company, and any upgrades will be included during those periods. So, the cost is $26,000 down payment and $2,500 a month for the three-year period. So, we're asking, I believe there's a resolution tonight, John?
Yes.
To award that, or once it's awarded, we will be meeting with New York Security to designate the areas that we feel that the cameras should be installed at. Obviously, we're not going to install them in the sleeping quarter areas of the fire department. We're going to try to maintain as much privacy as we can in the non-public areas of the firehouse. But entrances, the card swipes will be on the doors. We'll know who's going in and out. The fire department will have to establish some protocols about how they're going to handle people going in and out. But we cannot have a repeat ever of what happened last year or the year before, and this is the first step to making that happen. So, I ask for your support on that tonight. That's all I have.
Any question for the Mayor? Old Matt on Johnson?
I just had one comment with respect to White Kane when you talk about welcome island shoes. You all know recently, two weeks ago, I was on two crutches, and I had to call ahead because I wasn't sure exactly how to get into the building. I never had to think about it. I came early to look at the two steps up to John's seat to make sure I wasn't going to fall on my butt in public. And I had to go to a conference in New Jersey Sunday, and I called ahead to make sure that if I was on two crutches, was I going to be able to get out of the building. So, it is something you don't think about until you don't have it. Is the place you're going going to accommodate your needs, as you said, going out of the Paramount? How am I going to get to the other side of the street? So, that's progress for sure. Thank you.
Yes, thanks. Alman Burr?
Security system, Mayor. Who's going to monitor that? Us in your office?
We're going to be establishing the protocols. There's a lot of issues with state law about retention of records.
A lot of times you can't watch it live. You have to...
Correct. Well, the live part I'm not sure about, but the biggest part will be erasing information. We want to make sure that the data is saved, that something, God forbid, something goes wrong at the firehouse and all of a sudden, you know, you have an 18-minute gap, which Massey's accustomed to. But he forgets Nixon. Say, it was a joke. Forget about it.
Whatever you said.
But the idea is, is to secure the data and secure all the information and develop rules and regulations on how it can be used. For example, it can't... What most places do, it can only be used in the official capacity. Not what most, it's what all should do. So, it's not... You're not going to see information from those cameras on Facebook. Say there's someone falls asleep and all of a sudden that information appears on Facebook. That's not going to happen. And if it does happen, we'll be able to tell who accessed that information. So, it's a pretty high-tech system. New York Security is one of the best in the business. As I said, they do a lot of... A lot of work for a lot of big companies. And they were the only bidder, but we did have several inquiries, but they met the criteria that we were looking for. And we worked with Orange County on this to develop the specs. So, it's not something that we develop locally. They developed the specs for us through Mr. Burpo and the Orange County... I'm not sure what the department is, but it's purchasing, the purchasing department.
Thank you.
Alderman Francois? Is the cameras going to be inside the fire department or outside the fire department?
Both, I hope. We want to cover doors. We want to cover the floor of the firehouse. We want to cover the door into the... Into the control room at the main firehouse. And you're going to have swipe cards on the inside door or outside doors. You're going to have swipe cards to allow for access in. The other two firehouses don't have control rooms, so we'll be controlling the floor of the firehouse, where the truck is, and the exterior doors.
Okay. But we're not going to have cameras in the kitchen where those...
No, no, no. Not the... Not in the kitchen, not in the... Not where their sleeping quarters or anything like that.
Okay.
No. But the hallways going to the... For example, there's going to be the stairway going from the first floor to the second floor will be covered because we want to know who's going into those rooms, because that was the problem, one of the problems that we had.
You're going to have to work, like in the summer, the doors open.
Correct. And that's... We're going to have certain protocols on the floor, and you want to make sure that people still sign in too. That... And that'll be something for the chiefs to handle.
Supposed to do that now.
Yes.
A lot of other firehouses already have it, that they have cameras. You know, if a kid runs in, they can see the kids running around the firetruck also. They have it already. Alman Kleiner?
Yes, sir.
Most of the questions from our constituents meeting, we'll wait for when the Commissioner is here. I think they relate more directly to him. But the one we've been asked a couple of times is, and you were talking about it tonight, the sidewalks and the project for the sidewalks and the intersections. Do we have any idea when that program will begin or might begin?
Yes. The... There are three different engineering firms involved in developing the plans because there's three different sources of money. The first source is the... What we call the Schumer money. That was federal money that was re-appropriated. It was like $2.7 million. Those plans are approved by DOT and we're ready to go. The second is WSP, which is a large, large engineering company. They're preparing the Dulson Avenue and most of the... All of the intersections, not most of the intersections, all the traffic light intersections. That should be ready to go to bid from what I was told today sometime in November. This work is not going to begin this year. It's going to be spring of 2020. And the third company is Lehman &amp; Getz. They're doing the parking lots under the DRI, and some of that money is also going into sidewalks. The issue is the coordination between the three different companies. And the fact that we need to coordinate for a couple of reasons. One, take Franklin Square, for example. You're going to have 250 feet going down West Main Street of new sidewalk. James Street, you're going to have 200 to 250 feet going up. And then in the middle, this is going to be the third funding source. We don't want to do corner and corner and then leave the middle with old sidewalk. So, it's three different sources, three different engineering firms. Once the final plans are in, they will then coordinate. It also requires coordination of implementing. We don't want to shut down the whole James Street parking lot at once. So, half of James Street will be done first, and then the other half will be done. The rear City Hall, that will be done at a separate time. Orchard Street, that lot will be done, hopefully first, because those businesses will be opening very quickly. So, it's a coordination issue between the three companies. WSP, just to give you an idea how big they are, they were the firm that was recently selected to do the Route 17M study for the states, a huge study for the traffic in the state. So, it's a big firm, and all of it should be ready. Lehman &amp; Getz should have theirs by the end of October. So, everything should be ready to go to bid in November.
Very good. I hope they were listening.
They better be listening.
Not will. We'll convey it at the next meeting.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mayor. Not other reports.
I don't mind if you want.
Remarks of Alderman. Aldman Massey?
I'd like to say no comment tonight, but I think that would shock an awful lot of people and it would obviously disgust me. I'm going to apologize right up front because I'm going to be talking for quite a while because I'm pretty disgusted. I really don't know where to start, but I guess I'll start with this. Jerry, you just absolutely disappoint me. I know that goes on deaf ears. I will say one thing.
Also not appropriate.
It started...
Realizing is not appropriate. Thank you. It is. Robert's rules.
It started at 7:22 a.m. on Sunday morning when my phone went off. And I looked at it and it was... I had several texts. One of them from someone I won't mention, but I will tell you this, that person is not in this room tonight. And the message read, "Kleiner the Snake Strikes Again." I had no idea what they were talking about. Said, "What are you talking about?" They said, "Obviously, you haven't read the paper." And I said, "No, on Sunday, I've been an usher at St. Joseph Church for probably the last 15, 20 years, and I do the 11:30 mass. I get up late on Sundays. I then read the paper." So, of course, I went on my front porch, got the paper, and I read it. I got to Aldman Kleiner's article. Shook my head, thought about it, and I said, "Well, I am going to compliment him on something." And the word "timing," you're going to hear several times tonight in my talk because Aldman Kleiner was very smart in the timing of that article. He knew that on Sunday, on my view, we're on vacation on Monday, there was no chance for rebuttal. So, unless you're at this meeting tonight, and I really wish to... I was hoping that it would be a packed house. I'm hoping that a lot of people are watching, or at least you people who are watching, who are here, will tell other people to watch. Because there is a rebuttal. Aldman Kleiner is a very intelligent young man, or, well, I guess I can call him young for what he did. Because unless you watch this, the only information you have is what he put out there. And I will give him credit on this. Most of the information in there is correct. However, you need someone to dot the i's, cross the t's, and put it all in perspective. And that's what I'm going to do right now. I think it was back in 2000... Well, I got to put my glasses on. 2004 to 2009, I believe Aldman Kleiner was on the Common Council. He sat somewhere, one of these seats. The salary was $5,000. I think in probably 2010, right around that time, he took the opportunity to run against our council president, and he lost. So, he was off the council for a while. Salary still $5,000 for Aldman. In 2013, he decided to run again. He was successful. Won in November, not going to take office until January 1. Salary $5,000. Now, here's the timing. On December 17th of 2013, the council decided to increase the salaries. They increased it by 100% from $5,000 to $10,000. Jerry happened to be at that meeting. He wasn't on the council. And he did speak. He didn't think it was right as he... He's pretty much always said that. He stayed on track. And he did, like I said, he spoke at that meeting on January 1st. He was at that meeting. And when it came time for comments on... Well, actually, it was January 7th was the meeting in 2014. Now, the salary was raised from $5,000 to $10,000. Jerry was upset with that, didn't like the way it was done, just like he doesn't like the way it's being done now. I've got the minutes of the January 7th, 2014, and Aldman Kleiner, nice to be back. He talks about some other things, nothing about the raise. It didn't bother him so much because he took that $5,000 for 2014, 2015, 2016, 2017, 2018, 2019. So, that $30,000 didn't bother him. Now, two years ago, we discussed amongst ourselves, the council, of raising the mayor's salary, the council president's salary, and the Alderman's salary. After some discussion, it was decided we wouldn't raise the Alderman's salary, but we would raise the mayor and the council president, and that passed. Right after that, several Aldermen said, "You know what? You were right. A lot of people think that we raised the Alderman's salary and we should revisit that the next time around." So, for the last year and a half, it's come up once in a while amongst this group. Now, January of this year, if Aldman Kleiner was so intent that you shouldn't do this until petitions are signed, or the other timing, I'll get to in a minute. I really got a kick out of that apartment. All he had to do in January, February, somewhere along there, is say, "If we're going to decide on raising the Alderman's salary for 2020, I want to do it now and I'm making a motion." Nothing was said. He also was smart enough to understand that in order to do it for the ballot, for the people, and I think his voters should decide at ballot box on the Alderman's salary. That's the headline of his article on Sunday. He also puts in that article that he knew that in order to do that, you have to do that 60 days prior to the election. Never said word one, not word one. Now, a couple of weeks ago, the reporter puts an article in, and he's dead-set against it. it. And I said to him, I said, "Alderman Kleiner, we have nine votes on this council. We're all individuals. We all have our own ideas. I do not fault you for being against this. That's what you feel. You feel that's right? That's fine and dandy. Some others feel differently." I said, "But if you grandstand on this, I am gonna come after you for that $5,000. If it bothers you so much that you actually use the terminology 'unethical,' in quotes, by the way, because I understand that you have said that you didn't say that. Kleiner said he thought the proposed law was terrible and unethical. I think they, the common council, should be embarrassed to even vote on it. So if you think it's so bad, and if by some chance it passes, and I don't know, we're gonna have a vote here sometime before the night's up. If it passes, you can do what one other person did years ago, a good friend of mine, he couldn't take the money. So there is precedent for this. All you have to do is contact Don Paris, our treasurer, and say, "I'm aggrieved so much that they did this, I'm not gonna take that $5,000." Now, I also know, because you mentioned it to me, and I know you've mentioned it to other people, that that's exactly what you were going to do. And I think you said that because I put you on the spot here at a meeting, and I told you exactly what I was going to do if you grandstand it. I told you if you decided you weren't in favor of this, and you just voted no, and you didn't make accusations, that I would not say word one. I told you that on Thursday, talked to you for 45 minutes. And then I wake up Sunday morning. Now, let me address some of the stuff that you actually put in that article. You were upset, obviously, because the last few times alderman's salary were raised, it was after an election. And I purposely said to the council, "If we're going to do this, we're going to do it before the election." And I know what your comment's going to be, "Well, but it was after anyone has an opportunity to run for us." But you knew that in January, you knew that in February. Never said word one. You put in here the argument, let's see, 50%...oh, the school board. Apples and oranges, are you kidding me? There's a...past president of the school board. Anyone that's on the school board knows that there's no salary. Anyone that decides to run for council knows there's a salary. You...I mean, just to throw that out there. And then, you actually told what I believe is a lie on the first article, when you mentioned that we're losing positions in the rec. department, losing people and not replacing them. How about hiring some more skilled people? And I think you spoke to the mayor about that, and I think he straightened you out. Then you brought up the CSEA. They've only gotten so many raises, and so a certain portion. What you kindly left out there was, they were offered something else, where every one of their...at the time, they had 105 members. Every one of them would have gotten $1,000 up front and would have gotten $9,000, plus their raises would have been almost double of what they did. However, they were not given the opportunity to vote on that because the officers and leaders of the CSEA refused to allow them to vote on it. So you left that out. And I think you knew what you were doing, and in fact, I'd bet anything on you knew what you're doing. The insurance, that's something that's always been. It's been. Now, it's grown, granted, and there's a buyout. You also left out the fact that there is somebody on this council who doesn't get the insurance nor the buyout. It's not you, by the way. So when I read that article, I said, "Wow! The hypocrisy of it. You had no problems taking $30,000, and I would, if I had to make a wager now, that when I'm finished and it comes to your turn, you're going to say, 'I'm not gonna take the $5,000, and I told people I wasn't.'" But that's because you were put on the spot. I said right here in this room, oh, of course it is, right here in this room, and every alderman here will testify to it. I said, "Jerry, if you do that, I'm coming after you. There's no reason for it. I have no problems with you not supporting it. I understand you've never liked the idea, but when you throw around terms like unethical, and I know that upset people, and I noticed that some people had said that to you, that you conveniently left that terminology out of your My View column." I just want to take another minute because I can't remember if there was anything else I wanted to say, and I know I'm taking a lot of time, but I just can't tell you how aggravated I was when I saw that. We are in line with, and one of our other aldermen sent out, the salaries of other communities in Orange County. And I noticed that you put in, "Well, in the town of Walk Hill, they get the $14,500 or whatever it is, but there's only four of them." That's what the charter calls for. It's not my problem that there's only four of them. Do you think we do less work because there's eight of us than Walk Hill does with four? I probably want to stop here before I say some stuff that I may at some point be sorry for, but, you know, Jerry, we had a nice conversation on Thursday. We had a nice time on Saturday at the Historical Society. But you were just a phony. How could you possibly not say to me on Thursday night or on Saturday, "By the way, Joe, I wrote a My View column, and let me speak to you, gentlemen to gentleman," and I implored you, I said, "Look, Jerry, if you don't say anything, I'm not gonna bring your name up. When it comes time, I'm just gonna say no comment, and when the vote comes, whatever the vote is, if it should pass," I implored you, "Just take the money. Everyone can use it. You're probably one of the hardest working aldermen. You go to a lot of stuff. But for you to play that card and make us look foolish, that we should be embarrassed for taking a vote? I'm sorry. You're wrong in my eyes." And that's all I have.
Alderman Tobin?
I follow that. Well, I made my decision. I do think Jerry's one of the hardest working aldermen, and I do see how it struck a nerve, some of the language I could, you know, you could take offense to. So, thank you.
Alderman Green?
Thank you. On a lighter note first, I'd like to start...I did promise Captain LaLuce of the Phoenix Engine Company that I'd bring up that they are doing a firefighter spooky maze at the North Street Firehouse the last two weekends of October and Halloween night from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. I know that many of the members have been putting in a lot of hard work on this, and I saw some pictures of it, and I know they'd really be happy if the public would stop by for that. I was able on Saturday to stop by the Hillside Cemetery. I did do that walking tour briefly. Really, you need a whole day to walk through there and see everything. It's absolutely amazing. So if you do get a chance to go over, you know, certainly, there's a nice little guide that would help you see what's around there. I do want to say happy birthday to the mayor's mom. Quite the milestone, and I think, hopefully, she's partied hard enough that she's not sitting home watching this. But, you know, definitely a staple in our community as well. To the local law, I'll just be brief. I too have made a decision, long...thank everyone who's spoken to me, who has met with me, whether it be fellow aldermen, you know, whether it be union members, non-union members, constituents, people who are not even in the community. You know, thank you all. Your comments, your concerns have all been heard, and, you know, I think I've made the right decision when it comes to my vote, and we'll just go from there. Thank you.
Alderman Johnson?
Thank you. I thought the local law conversation would take place at the end of the agenda with that motion, but that's okay. I'm gonna follow my colleague, Mr. Green's suit, and talk about lighter issues. This is already alluded to, page three. You can't get better than page three unless you're on page one, so you did a good job. Congratulations to all. I did read with interest that the NAU staff may be cut in half, but I was reassured for you to say that you thought the program would still be functional and still be beneficial to us all. So I appreciate that, and kudos to you and your crew. Middies, good for middies. Last home game, I think, is the 25th. If I'm on less than one crutch, I'll be selling cheeseburgers. Support the team. It's great glue for our community. There was an article in Monday's paper, see, some of us do actually read the actual newspaper, I know it's not many, about the deer. Couple of years ago, I think Alderman Kleiner and I went to the workshop in Westchester. We had a town meeting. We talked about how many deer live in Middletown. I think at that time, we were told we had five to eight times more deer than we could support. We talked about ways to remediate that. Most of them were not things that the community found tasteful, because there's only one way not to have too many deer. And so it kind of went by the wayside. This article reminds us that Orange County is the top county in the state for 10 years with automobile accidents. I have a survey in my office from 2015 that said, I think through one of the insurance companies, throughout the state in 2015, there were 80,000 car accidents related to deer, totaling $265 million in repairs. They also indicated that crop damage totaled $59 million in repairs. So in 2015, the calculation was $324 million in damages due to deer. And there's probably more deer now than there were then. So that's the way that goes. And of course, in today's paper, there was an article about early voting, and it's how beneficial it could be. It is an experiment, and of course, we'd like the experiment to prove successful so that it might be continued. Now, local law. So, yes, I was alluding to the fact I was on the school board for a long time, and certainly one of the mantras of public officials are you agree to disagree? And the subsidiary remark is, attack the idea, not the person. Okay. So is that a bumper sticker, or is that a philosophy of this organization? I'm not really sure. There's also an element of free speech to this conversation. It's certainly the hallmark of our democracy. It's a clear aid to transparency, and transparency is a good thing. So this story started when Mr. Massey introduced the idea. I think he has standing to do so. He's a senior member of the council. He's the chairman of the finance committee, and he's one of three people on the Board of Estimate. So I think he has standing to bring it to the floor. And then, on September 13th, as we previously alluded to, there's an article on the record that said the alderman, in consideration, said the law was terrible and unethical, and I think they should be embarrassed to vote on it. I am certainly someone who takes offense to those remarks. I don't feel that's attacking the idea. I feel that's attacking the person. Maybe attack's a strong word, maybe not. Maybe I'm just a sensitive guy, Jerry, I don't know. But to say that I should be embarrassed because I don't agree with you, I find disparaging, inappropriate, and tremendously presumptuous that you would have those words to say. Now, but I'll agree to disagree. Unethical, that strikes a chord in me. I have spent half of my adult life in public office. If you take 17 on the board and six over here, you can do the rest of the math on that. I also, many people know and many people do not know, I was named to the Orange County Ethics Committee on September 1st of 2011. What did we do on that committee? Well, we have two charges. One is to review all the disclosure forms of all the employees and all the elected officials. That's about 340 documents. They each require three signatures to go through our committee. So our committee reviews about the equivalent of 1,000 documents a year. And we're looking for interrelationships between people and what they want to do, what job they want to have, who they're related to that's a contractor within the county. And when we have doubts, we ask them to come in, and we question, "How's it gonna go? What exactly does this mean when you say you do this and that person does that?" Does that make me an expert on ethics? Far from it. It was pretty much a low-profile job for a while, till somebody who was now named as legislator A several years ago, took a job with the company and clearly appeared to be in violation of ethics because he was now soliciting through the legislature business for the company. That resulted in a grand jury consideration, where no criminal charges were found. But then that situation was transferred to the Ethics Committee, and we had a formal hearing. I was on that panel. And we judged that he had acted in unethical manner. He needed to remove himself from that source of employment, and he was fined $1,000 in punitive damages because of that law. As a result of that, the county upped the ante on ethics. They put a program in place. There's a training program, and everybody has to go on a webinar like we do for sexual harassment, and make sure you've read and listened to it all and answered the questions. So every month, I sit for an hour or two with three lawyers. One's a former lawyer for the Orange County Legislature, one's a retired judge for Orange County, and one's our private attorney from a firm in New York. So I do get to listen to the nuances of ethics on a regular basis. Perhaps if we want to get a reading on that, somebody should submit a question. Because the other thing we do on this committee is do RFOs, requests for opinions. They are confidential. Somebody writes a document, they say, "This is what I'm thinking about. Is it ethical, or would be judged unethical by this committee?" Some of the questions we receive are not within our jurisdiction, and we answer, "You have to go back to your municipality." But some of them are. It would be interesting to see, if this question was submitted, what the answer would be. And I do not know what the answer would be. But once again, I'll agree to disagree. The next installment in this conversation was what I will call the epistle to the people. I did ask Jerry for his copy. We did speak privately before that. So there are two things I don't care for in this meeting, some need clarification in my mind. I strongly object to the illegal meeting held on September 3rd, and there's also deceptive math going on here. Killer words. And then, of course, this document morphed into a My View. I actually smiled on Sunday because when I served on the school board, which was intermittently dysfunctional over the years, back in that day, a My View was the ultimate power play to get a My View in the newspaper. And timing, of course, was everything in when you put it in place. That's old school. I'm not sure it's as effective now as it was in 1987, but touche on that. Agree to disagree. With respect to the idea that there was an illegal meeting, I was not at that meeting, so I can't speak to it. But coincidentally, I also serve as the president of the Board of Directors for Cornell Crawford of Extension. And last two weeks ago, I was up in Albany for our annual conference at the Statler Hotel at Cornell University. The board tracked, the board president tracked, there were 54 of us from each county in the state, two people, the Board of Directors and the Executive Director. My track, coincidentally, was an hour and a half workshop on open meetings law and on foil. And the representative there was from COOG, the Committee on Open Government, and we had a very in-depth conversation about meetings. And if you read Public Officers' Law, Section 7, Item 100.3, it clearly states the fact that if a committee is in a place as a quorum, they are forbidden from discussing committee business. And that could be at a social function, that could be at a political function, that could be at a ribbon-cutting, that could be at the diner having a cup of coffee. But it's clear that if you are five or more on a nine-member board, you should not be discussing committee business. The spirit of the law is clear. The public has a right to know if you were discussing committee business, when are you discussing it? And if I choose to be present, I have a right to do so, to listen to the comment. So in that case, I agree to agree. Having said all that, I have found the last five years, six years, to be a very collegial and cooperative environment. I would liken our team to a crew team. Follow me on this analogy. Yeah, we're on a shelf. Yeah, we're on a shell, we're eight, we have eight people, each have an oar. We each pull with equal strength, wisdom, and fortitude. And if we don't, we can't go in the right direction. Who are the coxswain? And yes, that's a word, you can Google me. The coxswain are the president of the board, the mayor, and the administration. And I think we've done a pretty good job because if we were off course, we wouldn't be where we are today. And I think we have made progress with lightning speed and we have been kept in the right direction, in our right lane and moving forward. And a crew is a group of people with a common effort trying to achieve a common goal. And I think we deserve kudos for that. Having said all of that, I will have two things to say. Number one, you will never find me disparaging any of you as respect to your character or judgment when it comes to a vote at this table. That won't happen. Number two, I respect, admire, and appreciate Mr. Kleiner. I think he's a very good contributor and an irreparable attribute to both this committee and to our community. And you can take that one to the bank as well. So I've been talking for a while, not as long as Massey, that's for first. So some people might say, when is he going to stop flapping his lips? For God's sakes, when is he going to get over himself? Simple answer, I just did. Thank you.
Alderman Kline?
Once again, I respectfully ask that I never have to speak after Alderman Johnson. Thank you. That being said, you know, we've been through this a couple of times since my time on the board. My personal reaction from my constituents when it has come to time to increase salaries or things like that have always been, when I turn to my constituents in meetings or via email, that they do not see an issue with it. Not to me is a stamp of them being pleased with the work that Alderman Johnson and I do for them and that they see the investment of time that we put into them. And again, the elections serve to remind you of the kind of job you're doing and if you are worthy of the salary you earn here, because anyone can run who lives here in this community at any time and step up and decide how much time they will take away from their main jobs because this is not our full-time job, our families, our children, to put into this. And anyone who wants to do that, I, I recommend that they do. We've had many years of uncontested elections and frankly, one, I like to take it that we're doing a great job and that they're happy with it, but two, I mean, people understand that this is a lot. Alderman Green, who just went through a primary, you know, his wife's about to have a baby, where is he? Knocking on doors, talking to people, sacrificing that time with his family. And it's, it's a big commitment. So are we worthy of the salary or are we worthy of the same salary as, as the people who sit on the board in Wallkill? I believe that we are in the interest of the town. You know, we have made sure that we have taken care of our contracts and our employees and our rank and file, and I think timing-wise, it's not inappropriate. Also, every member of this board is entitled to their vote and their reasons behind that vote. And ethically speaking, any attempt to influence another board member's vote, whether it's via intimidation or coercion or shaming, I think that is a real question of ethics. And I don't think that anyone here should feel that they have to be shamed into a change in their vote by words that have been said or printed. I myself do not see an issue with moving forward this local law and I encourage, you know, people to get involved in their local politics that, that have differing or even the same views. This city has been doing an outstanding job as evidenced by our Moody's report. And I think that this board has worked very well together to get it done. And that's all I have this evening.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. Congratulations to the middies for bringing the Erie Bell back. I mean, it was here, but you know, they take it over to port for the game, so congratulations on keeping it in Middletown. They've got quite a streak going. Weather will be getting cold soon and the warming station opens on November 17th, just a little bit more than a month from today. And they have to be ready for it, so they're going to do training for the warming station if anyone's interested in possibly volunteering. The dates for the warming station training are this Thursday, the 17th. These are all at 7:00 PM at St. Paul's Church on the Mulberry Street entrance. This Thursday, the 17th, next Tuesday, the 22nd of October, and Wednesday, the 30th of October. So thank you, Andrew, for the website. You can always go to MiddletownWarmingStation.com and sign up and volunteer. I'm happy, I only had one thing to say at the ribbon cutting for the Heritage Trail and that was hallelujah. It's, it's finally here, almost, it's on its way. So just knowing that the bids are out and construction has started, that's, that's a promise that's finally been kept, so. A long time, they called her an entrepreneur in the obit, but anyone who knows the State Hospital from the old days knows Addie's Attic. And Addie's Attic was in a couple of places that ended up in the Kleiner Building, that was nice. And she ran a thrift store, but it was mostly for the patient's benefit and she did that for years. She passed away this week at 99 and a half, so I just want to take note of that and there was no service, so pay my respects. Under Robert's rules, personal attacks are not allowed during remarks and should never be addressed. And if you want to address ideas, that's one thing. I don't decide what the headline will be, I don't decide when it hits the paper. That's, that's not my decision and I will speak to the law specifically when we should, when we vote on the local law at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Alderman John Francois?
Chief, this comment's to you. Congratulations. When I first read the article, I was annoyed, I said, well, you know, this is well deserved, that should have been happened a long time ago. Not only you and your department committed to protect the city of Middletown and serve the city of Middletown, but you also, you and your department had a chance to feed our community. The pop-up barbecues was popping up everywhere this summer and the police department walking our neighborhood, talking to constituents and knocking on doors. That was well deserved. Congratulations.
Alderman Burr?
I think my fellow aldermen said it all. I'm just, we all have the right to vote and we're a nine council and everybody has their own opinions. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
New business.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $38,000 within the police department's 2019 budget to cover the cost of necessary camera repairs and upgrade to replace the repair that are in need of service.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion?
Roll.
Graham Kassun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to accept a donation, the amount of $196.20 from United Way for the Middletown Cares Coalition.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion?
Roll.
Graham Kassun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin to transfer $10,000 within the police department's 2019 budget to cover the costs associated with repairing vehicles.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion?
Roll.
Graham Kassun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to declare 2006 Ford Crown Victoria and a 2010 Dodge Charger surplus for the police department.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion?
Roll.
Graham Kassun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to accept a donation, the amount of $400 from the Middletown Lions Club for the Disc Golf Course.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion?
Roll.
Graham Kassun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green to designate community development to be lead agency for the preparation of the 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan and authorize the mayor to sign any required certifications and documents pursuant to the plan.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion?
Roll.
Graham Kassun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois to transfer $10,000 from the general fund balance and authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Optima Environmental Services to remove a 1,000-gallon underground tank at 393 County Route 78.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion?
Roll.
Graham Kassun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $29,575 from the general fund balance for the payment of the CJBD General Contracting for payment of emergency repair to a large section of the North Street Firehouse roof.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion?
Roll.
Graham Kassun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to authorize the chief of police to donate 33 bicycles to the United Presbyterian Church, which will repair bicycles and donate them back to the members of our community.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion?
Alderman Johnson?
How long did it take you to accumulate 33 bicycles?
A little over a year, about two years.
Really? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Roll.
Graham Kassun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to authorize the treasurer to transfer $386,677.55 from the sewer fund balance to fund the disposal of landfill sludge for the remainder of the fiscal year.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion?
Roll.
Graham Kassun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green to approve and authorize the mayor to sign an easement agreement regarding 180 Seward Avenue between the city and the new campus, Inc., for the city to maintain the historic and aesthetic significance of the stone wall that is in the main entrance of the community campus on Monaghan Avenue.
Resolution sponsored by Green?
Green.
Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion?
Roll.
Graham Kassun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to approve and authorize the mayor to sign an easement agreement regarding 39 West Main Street to allow for air conditioning line on the easterly side of the building on the premises, which line enters the airspace of what is known as Festival Square.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion?
Roll.
Graham Kassun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to award the only bid for the surveillance cameras for all Middletown Fire Department buildings to New York Security System, Inc.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Kuzun.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
John Francois.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. That is all for new business.
Local law.
We have a local law sponsored by Alderman Massey, a local law one of 2019, increasing the salaries of the aldermen.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey. Do I have a second? Alderman Graham Kuzun. Discussion? Alderman Kleiner.
Thank you. I wrote a letter to the editor, which ended up being a my view. I don't determine when it gets printed. And it was going to print earlier in the week. I told Mr. Massey many times in discussion that I had written a letter to the paper to just explain why I don't agree with any elected official voting to raise their own salary. And I said that letter would be in the paper. As far as I knew, that's up to them, whether they printed it or not. But I just, because I didn't want to have to get into all this, I just wanted to make my position clear, because I had spoken about it. I've always felt that way. It was not brought up in January or February, while we were, before we carried petitions. The office we ran for paid $10,000. I didn't hear any discussion of a raise. That's why I didn't bring it up then. And I didn't look up until it was brought up, what could be done to put it on the ballot as a petition, to let the voters decide if that's what you wanted to do, raise the salary for aldermen. The school board remark is simply because it says we want to attract good candidates, and the school board has no salary. And they attract some damn good candidates. When you say, if you speak out against it, and this definition is anyone, one of our board members speaking on anything is grandstanding, if it's not them speaking. Well, grandstanding is different from explaining your position that you feel strongly. And I thank Alderman Johnson for serving on ethics boards. It's not easy. I've attended almost every ethics board meeting in Middletown over the last 15 years. And, but my ethics training was in my philosophy degree, which I majored in ethics, and my postgraduate work, in which I majored in political science, political philosophy and ethics. It's many, many years of trying to understand, it's looking at the 27th Amendment to the Constitution, the last one, one of the original Bill of Rights. It got passed over 200 years later, finally got ratified by enough states to become part of the Constitution that says Congress shall not raise their own salary, except that another election shall have passed. And by that, they don't mean just before the election, when no one else can be a candidate. So I don't understand it. I brought up the CSEA because it was mentioned here that, well, everyone else has gotten a raise. The union got a raise. So I said, "Okay, let's look at what the union got." We weren't in on the discussions of what the offers were and what might have been. We're looking at the raises the union got. We can look at the raises we gave non-union employees in the city to help them match what the union got. They got lots of different givebacks and stipulations on it. The reason our buybacks went down is because the union agreed to less money on the buybacks for the insurance. So if it had been brought up, I certainly would have spoken out about it. My remarks on the REC Commission come right out of, I go to every REC Commission meeting, and they come right out of the minutes of the REC Commission on their need for more help. So if it was an overstatement, I'm sorry, but certainly the, and looking as going forward when people have been out and people are sick and people are, most skilled people are resigning and skilled people have to work their way up, you can't just hire skilled people. So it's a difficult issue, and one that I thought should, that has been asked to be discussed here in the REC Committee meeting. Now, there are a lot of ways to look at the raise, but the proper way to do it is to either, by the time I heard the word about the raise and looked up about the petitions, I saw, and I read New York State law, and it says enabling petition, et cetera, has to be filed 60 days before the election. And by the time this came up, we were out of time. I hadn't heard anyone say we were thinking of raising our own salaries this year. I just hadn't heard that. Now, if I had heard it, it should have been at a finance committee meeting, and it should have been discussed publicly, and it should have been on this, on the Middletown City calendar. And it should have been brought up then. We had an email asking us all to come here and meet at 7:15 to talk about a raise. And that's the one, that's the meeting in which I was threatened. But I didn't, I said, "This is unnoticed. It's the definition of an illegal meeting, calling everyone together on an email to discuss an issue of city business without any public notification." Now, it wasn't a secret meeting. It wasn't behind closed doors. But if you don't tell anybody, it may as well be. And I made that point clear, and they just decided to leave me out of the discussion. I said, "You don't have that option. I'm not in the discussion." And I checked with the person who took Robert Freeman's place, and it's not an official opinion, but she said, "Oh, my God. It's the definition of illegal meeting." So I don't know what else you need, and I'm just not into doing personal attacks. This is an issue that's come up before, and I would like to see New York State pass a law saying no elected official may raise their own salary, except for the next election cycle. You raise the salary for the office. And when someone tells you what a great job you've done, and you deserve, you know, you deserve more money, bring it up in finance committee and talk about it, but when other people can run for that same office. And I don't know what to say about the council. If you think we're not attracting good candidates, what does that say about us as a board? So it's flabbergasting, but of course, everybody's going to vote their own way. I just think it's an issue that should, we should never be put in the position of having to vote on our own raises for the current coming term when we can have no opposition, we're all running unopposed. And that's my statement. I thought I said it pretty clearly. And I'm not attacking anyone personally. I'm just saying it's not the right way to do this. And yes, I long ago talked with Don Paris and said, "I absolutely will not accept a raise." But you are telling me that if I vote against this, you'll lobby that I, you know, that's a threat. We shouldn't be threatening each other at these meetings. We should just be talking about the issues. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Oh, yeah.
Alderman Massey.
Semantics. That's what you just got finished telling us. And by the way, I happen to agree with you, that no council should vote themselves a raise. We are not voting ourselves a raise. We are voting the next council. It's not my fault that, or anybody else in this room's fault, that people don't run against us. We are not voting. This does not take effect until after the next council is sworn in. Now, I know that it kind of looks silly, because we are the next council. So under your theory, that if in two years, two of us run unopposed, or three of us run unopposed, and the rest of them run opposed, the only people that can get a raise are the ones that ran opposed? Because if we, in two years, vote another raise for 2022, and happen to be running unopposed, are we not entitled, are those people not entitled to it? So it happens to be the law, Jerry. And if you want to change the law, I have no problems with that. Go ahead and give it your best shot. But for you to say that there were no conversations, you know, I'm a little hard of hearing, and I'll write it off, maybe you didn't hear it the number of times we spoke. But all you had to do in January, February, March, is say, "I'm going to put it on for right now. If you people want to consider raising the salary in 2020, let's do it now." Never said a word. So, and that thing about you don't determine when they put the letter in, you knew what time, when you wrote it. But I don't want to belabor this any longer. You have your view. You'll have your vote. I am not surprised. And we'll move forward. And hopefully, as far as I'm concerned, and I will tell you in an open meeting, that's being televised and recorded, once this is done, the vote's taken, there is no animosity from my point to anyone on this council. They vote the way they want to vote. If it passes, fine. If it doesn't pass, so be it. And I will not, at the next meeting, still have in my mind, "Well, I'm really upset at Alderman Kleiner," or Alderman Graham Kuzun. It's done with. This vote, this vote will be whatever it is, and that will be it. And I believed, when you mentioned the record, I thought it was when we spoke and you wrote out that whole thing, and you gave it to that young lady with me present. That's what I thought. So we probably should end it. I'm going to end my part of it. And the vote will be what the vote will be.
Anyone else?
Call question?
Um, oh, sorry. Roll.
Graham Kuzun.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
I thought you were just going to make a comment.
No, I wanted to ask to call the question.
Well, you have to vote on calling the question. Are we voting on calling the question?
Either way, I think when, once we did the roll, I withdraw my motion, right?
I'd just like to make one response, and that's, in Robert's rules.
Go ahead, Ms. Kleiner.
This is my second time. If I had heard anything about, I didn't bring this up in January, February, because the council did double their salary back in 2014. And I wasn't thinking about a raise. I just hadn't heard the discussion. And again, if there were a discussion, there should have been a finance committee meeting, and that's when it should have been brought up. It shouldn't be someone talks to somebody and somebody's mumbling about a raise. I didn't hear any of that. I don't hang in those circles. I have other things to do. How you would do a raise for the next time is in January of 20, for the 2021 election, in January or February, you would bring it up and you would vote on it. And then the people who might consider running for this council for 2022 would know that they're running for an office that pays $15,000. So that's, that's how you would do it. The other way you would do it is if you wanted next year, you're going to get a lot of people out voting for the presidential election, do a referendum and put it on the ballot and let the voters decide next year. So you're waiting one year. That was what I thought was the way we should do it, and that's the way you could do it. You wouldn't have whosever unopposed would have nothing to do with it. It would be for the office of aldermen, and it would be done ahead of the process by which you become a candidate. And if you do it after that, you're doing it for the person. So that's my comment. I don't think it's ethical to vote yourself a raise. That's my opinion. That's many years of studying ethics. So that's just my opinion. The comparison with Walk Hill came because we got a list of salaries that said, "This is what Middletown, this is what..." And if you divide it by population, Middletown paid the highest amount of all those cities. Our salaries are currently the highest, if you divide by total population, of the examples that were sent to us. So I said, "Those numbers don't hold true." Because if you compare just the individual salary, but you have to look, but you were wanting to look at population and everything else. So we're not, we're underpaid, and of course, the insurance is a major part of what the benefits are here. So, and for attracting good candidates, you know, we should be. And I would encourage people to run, and encourage more people to get involved and run. But, so, that's, that's the end of my remarks. Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll.
Start again.
Yeah, start again.
Graham Kuzun.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
No.
Johnson.
Aye.
John Francois.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
No.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Seven, one, two, three, four, five, seven to two noes. That's all for local laws.
On it.
Mr. President, I move the accounts to be ordered and the claims to be adjusted, and the city treasurer be authorized to wish a warrant for their payment.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Roll.
Graham Kuzun.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.